We'll call this regular city council meeting to order on December first, twenty twenty five at six oh five P M. Roll call, please.
Mister Anderson?
Present.
Mister Bateman?
Present.
Miss McCollum?
Present.
Mister Parrott?
Present.
Downs?
Present.
Clemmons?
Present.
Mrs. O'Donohue?
Present.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, is there anybody that would like to speak under a public participation this evening? Okay, for the record, there is no public participation this evening. We will start with the consent agenda. It consists of five A, payment of bills, five B, approval of minutes, November twelfth, twenty twenty five, committee of the whole meeting, November seventeenth, twenty twenty five, regular city council meeting, and five C, request from the city of Lincoln to permit the closing of various city streets on Thursday, December fourth, twenty twenty five, from five thirty P M until eight P M for the annual Christmas parade.
To approve.
Second.
Okay, I do have a discussion item regarding item five C. So dude, I was gonna do this in announcements, but I need to do it now because I'm gonna have to ask for an amendment. Given the weather that's supposed to happen Thursday, it's supposed to be like in single digits. We've already had some people call in canceling their entries. The Rail Splitter Auto Club, they are not gonna be able to drive the grand marshal. It's just kind of becoming a snowball effect with this event, no pun intended. So what we have decided to do, and I spoke with Mister McCoy and Miss Metelco, myself and Miss Groves, and we've spoke with some of the participants. We're going to still do the Santa appearance on Thursday at six thirty P M at the depot. Santa will arrive here at city hall, and then he will be escorted down to the depot by the fire department. We had to keep him on that night because he also will be making appearances throughout the season at White Oak Mall in Springfield. We are then going to move the parade till next Thursday, December eleventh, at the same time, six thirty, same route and everything as as the request indicates, but that will be the only change. So I would like to request an amendment to the road closer request to amend it to December eleventh, twenty twenty five, instead of December fourth. Miss Bateman?
Since that's all in the consent agenda, you're you just can't say one item, correct? Or I mean, can you separate that item out of the consent agenda?
So we make an amendment to five C, but then but then there was already a motion made for the entire consent agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, we can do that.
I'll make a motion to remove five C from the consent agenda.
Um, I'll second that motion.
Okay, Alderman Bateman made a motion to remove five C, Alderman Downs second. Any other discussion on that amendment to the consent agenda? Roll call, please.
Mister Downs?
Yes.
Mister Clemmons?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donohue?
Yes.
Mister Anderson?
Yes.
Bateman?
Yes.
Miss McCollum?
Yes.
Mister Parrott?
Yes. Okay, now we'll do the consent agenda as amended. Roll call, please. Yeah, this is.
Who made the motion on that to begin with? Robin, okay. Mrs. O'Donohue?
Yes.
Mister Anderson?
Yes.
Mister Bateman?
Yes.
Mrs. McCollum?
Yes.
Mister Parrott?
Yes.
Mister Downs?
Yes.
Mrs. Clemmons?
Yes.
Clemmons, I'm sorry.
Okay, now do I have a motion to approve five C? Is there a second? Well, we'll have to make a motion to approve, then do an amendment on that item, cuz it's on the agenda as December fourth, correct?
Previously, what we've done is that, you know, you guys make a motion to approve it, and then there's a then someone makes an amendment from which you vote on the amendment, and then you vote on the whole, then you vote on the whole five C. So.
Right.
Someone makes a motion to approve five C, and then someone makes amendment motion, you vote on the amendment, and then you vote on the whole five C.
Correct. Yeah, because we were there was a vote to remove that item from the consent agenda, so now it's a separate item. So Alderman Clemmons made the motion. Alderman Bateman, did you who second?
I'll second.
Alderman Downs second the motion for five C. Okay, is there an amendment to five C? Or a motion for an amendment? I'm sorry.
I'll I'll make a motion to amend five C to December eleventh.
I'll second it.
Okay, Alderman Downs made a motion to amend from December fourth to December eleventh, and Alderman Bateman second that. Discussion? Okay, roll call on the amendment, please.
Mister Bateman?
Yes.
Mrs. McCollum?
Yes.
Mister Parrott?
Yes.
Mister Downs?
Yes.
Clemmons?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donohue?
Yes.
Mister Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, now roll call on item five C as amended, please.
Mister Downs?
Yes.
Mister Clemmons?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donohue?
Yes.
Mister Anderson?
Yes.
Mister Bateman?
Yes.
Mrs. McCollum?
Yes.
Mister Parrott?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry for that confusion. Yeah, okay, moving on to item six on the agenda this evening. Item six is ordinance creating section three dash twenty seven of the Lincoln City Code. This item was tabled on November seventeenth, twenty twenty five. Is there a motion to remove it from the table, or would the council like to keep this on the table at this time?
Motion to keep it on the table.
All right. I don't think we have to make a motion, just it just stays. Okay, then we'll move on to item eight A, approval of the repair of fire department squad fifty one hundred at a cost not to exceed eighteen thousand nine hundred seven dollars and seventy five cents.
So move.
Alderman Parrott made the motion, Alderwoman McClellan second. Discussion? Alderman Bateman?
Is this a rebuild or just a new new bullet?
It is a rebuild. It's a complete rebuild.
Okay, other discussion? Roll call, roll call, please. Oh, already made motions, Dennis. We're good. Thanks.
Mrs. McCollum?
Yes.
Mister Parrott?
Yes.
Mister Downs?
Yes.
Mister Clemmons?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donohue?
Yes.
Mister Anderson?
Yes.
Mister Bateman?
Yes.
Next item is eight B, approval of sewer blower building V F D upgrade at a cost not to exceed one hundred thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Alderman Bateman made the motion, Alderwoman O'Donohue second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. O'Donohue?
Yes.
Mister Anderson?
Yes.
Mister Bateman?
Yes.
Mrs. McCollum?
Yes.
Mister Parrott?
Yes.
Mister Downs?
Yes.
Mister Clemmons?
Yes. Okay, next item up is eight C, approval of the renewal of a certificate of deposit in the sewer O N M fund for a term of seven months at a rate of three point five nine percent.
Move to approve.
Second.
Alderwoman O'Donohue made the motion, Alderman Anderson second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mister Anderson?
Yes.
Mister Bateman?
Yes.
Mrs. McCollum?
Yes.
Mister Parrott?
Yes.
Mister Downs?
Yes.
Mister Clemmons?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donohue?
Yes.
Okay, next item up is eight D, approval of economic development grant to Chiven O M Oil D B A Fifth Street Food Market at thirteen oh two Fifth Street for exterior door replacement at a cost not to exceed seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Alderman Clemmons made the motion, Alderman Parrott second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mister Parrott?
Yes.
Mister Downs?
Yes.
Mister Clemmons?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donohue?
Yes.
Mister Anderson?
Yes.
Bateman?
Yes.
Mrs. McCollum?
Yes.
Next is eight E, approval of economic development grant to Tammy Rich Miley, D B A I G Y six thrift at three eleven South Sangamon Street for half roof replacement at a cost not to exceed seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Alderman Clemmons made the motion, Alderwoman McClellan second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. McCollum?
Yes.
Mister Parrott?
Yes.
Mister Downs?
Yes.
Clemmons?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donohue?
Yes.
Mister Anderson?
Yes.
Bateman?
Yes.
Okay, next item is eight F, approval of amended lease agreement for office space between Lincoln Economic Advancement and Development Lead in the city of Lincoln.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alderman Downs made the motion, Alderwoman O'Donohue second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. O'Donohue?
Yes.
Mister Anderson?
Yes.
Mister Bateman?
Yes.
Mrs. McCollum?
Yes.
Mister Parrott?
Yes.
Mister Downs?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, that brings us down to announcements. Somebody have an announcement they'd like to make? Alderman Bateman, Alderwoman McClellan, and Mister Landers.
Has anybody had a chance to read the multi pet? So I can get some feedback whether I put it on the next cow or not, other than Sam Downs, the only one that's reached out to me?
Okay.
Were we supposed to reach out if we had any suggestions or anything?
Yeah, and Sam can correct me if I'm wrong. His only suggestion right now is he doesn't believe.
Four is is too it's too little.
Four is too low.
Thoughts?
Four is right where a large percentage of the cities are in the state of Illinois. I got that straight from the city attorney.
Let's try look.
Yeah, there is a significant portion of what I've seen that are there are four. I've even seen one that's three.
I agree. I've seen one that's seven. I mean, there there are some that, I mean, I just I respectfully disagree. And and a hundred percent of the of the constituents that I spoke with also felt and and felt the same way I do.
Alderman Parrott?
Do any of the ordinances in these municipalities have space? Requirements for the number of of animals like in your residence? So if you have a larger home, obviously, you could, you know, without much of an issue, have more more pets. I can see someone having two dogs and three cats, and that's five. That puts them over. If you lived in a smaller, you know, apartment or a home even, perhaps that would, you know, be too much. I just didn't know if any of the other municipalities had any requirements for space.
Not 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 from what I've seen.
Square footage of of your place. And there's no space requirement or mention of space requirements in our ordinance.
Right. And there's for ones I've seen that from the other municipalities, I didn't I'm not I have not seen any type of spatial type requirements. I've seen that would probably make things very complicated if we did, kind of opening up maybe a can of worms to as to we could probably argue that to the nth degree, you know, as to what would be the proper space requirements if we did go down that road.
Mister Gonzo? Go ahead, Mister Gonzo.
Thank you, mayor. As I recall, the current multi pet ordinance is five, specifies five, been that way, as I recall, for many years, and that seems to be seems to work okay. I, you know, perhaps the council may want to consider using that number or, you know, some other number greater than that, but since rather than going backward on it and lowering it when when people have, you know, had to abide by five, and if you go backward from that, then you're saying somebody's had five in the past or more, and now you're saying you're gonna limit it to five or to four.
Dennis, did you want to? Okay. Alderman Parrott?
I mean, if we had five on the books already. Four is more. No, it's four, and then you have to get a multi pet license. Correct. You would be entitled to have five if you had the multi uh multi pet license. From how I read it, if you have a multi pet license, there is no limit.
It's five and above.
Five and above. Five and above, yeah. Yeah.
I believe the proposal Mister Bateman's making caps it at four.
Caps it at four, and if you have more than four, you would have to have a state licensed breeder's permit. So you'd have to go to the state first, get a breeder's permit to have more than four, and then that would grant you a multi. So what we're proposing is you don't you don't need a multi pet license up to four. After four, to get anything over four, you have to have a state breeder's permit, or if you have four and say you have a litter of kittens, you have to get back down to four with within those kittens reaching or puppies reaching six months of age.
Commercial breeder, or I'm sorry, breeder's permits are commercial, correct?
State.
Business. Believe it's licensed by the state and typically from what I've as I understand breeders, because, you know, I I'm I'm not super well versed being a I've never been a breeder myself, but typically, I believe they do it for profit.
Yeah, so it's it's a commercial license. No, I'm I not gonna vote for that.
And I'll just ask this. What is your suggestion to control people with eight, nine, fourteen, twenty animals?
Sure.
In their house, and right now, most of those people that have multi pets, they don't take them to the vet and get them vaccinated or checked out either. They're just hoarding animals.
Yes, I I completely understand that. People who hoard animals, that's neglect. I I do not condone condone that at all. But that's that's a an illness, and whether we have an ordinance or not, those people are still gonna do engage in that behavior. I think that if we follow the the ordinance as it's written now, I think that that gives the city, it makes them aware of who the multi pet owners are, so we can keep a closer eye on them, make sure their animals are are knowing who they are benefits us. It's non intrusive, and that's what I think we should continue to do.
Alderman Parrott?
Couple of quick things. John, what's the difference between a multi pet and a a breeder?
So a multi pet owner would be just your regular citizen, you know, within the city of Lincoln, who has more than four pets. Okay, they would come and they would get the multi pet license or apply for the multi pet license, and theoretically, be be granted it, and then they would be allowed to have more than four pets. The breeder is somebody who will typically will have a state licensed breeder's license, breeder's license, and they will breed one, like they'll be breeding a certain breed, like they'll be breeding, let's just say theoretically boxers, okay? And they'll only be doing boxers. Like, you're not gonna see a situation where we have, you know, eight cats and, you know, twenty dogs. They typically, they breed them for profit, so they breed breeding them. And once they're bred, then they they would sell them. And I would theoretically, you know, they would be they'd be doing it for for money. So it's as I understand, it's it's a little bit more business centric. You know, so they don't, I would presume that they, again, I'm not a breeder, but I presume that people do not have any sort of attached sentimental value on on those respective animals, but also probably the idea being it's state licensed, there's probably more likelihood that they are being properly cared for.
Okay, so so if anybody wanted to have more than four, really, that if you get the commercial from the state, it's not to to get more than four for pet purposes, it's only for for breeding purposes. Peggy, how many in the past year would you say, if you could guess, we've had Lincoln residents apply for a multi pet, one? And and so if we have a four or five, what's your anticipation of? We're not gonna get anymore. And we're in your, and I can't recall, we we can't do anymore. We can't do a multi pet above four with with your.
I can tell you is I can drive by a dozen residences that's way over four.
So so we're over four now?
I have one.
So if we if we put this.
What I'm getting at is we're we're not, it's kind of like the massage thing, Sam. We we need to put more teeth in our ordinance to be able to enforce it better.
So so if we move, so we put this ordinance in, who's gonna enfor? Oh, so you're talking, I mean, we need to enforce it, is basically what you're saying, or even our current ordinance, we need to enforce it.
Yeah, we would have to work with animal control in our code enforcement office to to enforce it, and as I told Sam in a lengthy conversation, you're basically relying on the neighbor or people that are calling in the people that's got fourteen animals in their house.
Would you would you would you be able to go up to do four and then have a multi pet and and have people apply for at one additional if they wanted five, and and if we found people that had four to your and they didn't and they had more than four, and they didn't have the multi pet for five, you're still gonna go after them with an ordinance anyway?
Right.
Mister Downs?
I'm fine with adding more teeth to our current ordinance. That's fine. I I I didn't even know about this ordinance until you brought it up, you know, with that, when you brought it up. I I think that there's probably a lot of people in Lincoln that are unaware of of this of this ordinance. So I would rather promote the ordinance that we have now and give it more of a chance to work, because, again, I I think ninety nine percent of Lincoln was unaware of this, than try to to change something that I that I I don't I don't like your ordinance. I I just I that that breeding thing is is it's commercial. I think pets are a good thing. It's a blessing, and I don't want to hurt stop people from having them. As long as they're being taken care of, I think that six is a very, I think that six is a manageable number. And I mean, I talked to a vet, and she agreed. She was the one who threw out six, in fact. I I think that that's very possible. Mister Parrott? But I think to Kevin's point, though, if you have more than than four, what's the likelihood that they're vaccinated? And if we were thinking of of the citizenry of 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 Lincoln, you know, and somebody were to get bit, you know, that may have, you know, some type of infections or whatever rabies, you know, is a common one, then we're not doing our citizens very very well either. I I mean, sure, yeah, no, unvaccinated pets are a huge problem. People definitely should vac vaccinate their pets. Having six animals, like I just said, is still a very manageable number. Those vets or those those pets will still be taken to the vet and vaccinated, absolutely. I mean, that goes without saying, you should vaccinate your pet for rabies. It's the law. That that's apples to oranges there, that that all pets have to be vaccinated regardless of how how many you have. So and I guess just for example, you all know me, I have a dog and a cat. My girlfriend has three cats. If we got married and moved into it with one another, we would be in violation of the ordinance. I'm not doing this for myself, but you know, I mean, that's 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 the situation that we're putting people in. Like, you can't have pets, you can't move in with your girl if if that's gonna put you in violation of an ordinance. That's a big deal, and I think that that's it's over. I I just think it's a bad idea, and the people that I talk to in my ward agree.
Hey. Use your microphone.
Did you ask them people if they had their animals vaccinated? Because I know some responsible people that's got five and six animals, and I guarantee you they're not vaccinated.
Well, but I will also say this ordinance isn't going to make the people that are not getting vaccinated with their animals to run out and get their animals vaccinated. But what it will do is it will give some teeth so that if there ever is an incident, then they will be reminded that they should have got those animals vaccinated, you know?
So I guess are are we limiting the amount of pets because we think that we're they're not vaccinating their pets? I I mean, I would rather just raise the fines for not vaccinating your pet. That seems more way more logical to me.
I believe I believe Mister Bateman can keep me honest, but I believe this topic came to your attention from a concerned citizen with somebody that had upwards of ten plus animals that lives in that same neighborhood. What the situation was around that, I Mister Bateman knows more details than that.
There's health issues. There's all kinds of issues, Sam. When you talk to other municipalities, they come to the conclusion of four because they're trying to limit the number of animals living in their city because they know people don't go get them vaccinated, or they just open the door and let the dog out or the cats out or whatever. You come down campus for you, there's cats everywhere. I mean, everywhere. There's more cats than coyotes.
They're all black.
Yeah, yeah, there's 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 one one male who's spreading his love around. But it's it's just, I've had more than one complaint of people not being able to enjoy their backyard because their neighbor has multiple animals and just not not caring for them properly. So this is twofold. A, to put some teeth in the ordinance about the vaccinations, and B, trying to lower the population in this town because it's getting way out of town.
Mister Gonzo?
Yeah, just one final thing. I I agree with Alderman Downs on this. I think it's, I mean, there are people that don't vaccinate their animals, but you can have one animal and not vaccinate the animal. So, you know, we don't say, well, you can't have any animals because somebody might not vaccinate their animal. I think, but I think maybe enforcement of and it's require publicizing the multi pet ordinance so people know about it. A lot of people that probably have of four, five, six animals don't know that that ordinance exists, and maybe we should, you know, more effectively publicize that. You'd probably get more people to comply with it, which would enable better monitoring of those places as well. Also, if you had more people getting multi pet ordinance, it's an increased increase in that revenue stream, which I like.
Okay, Mister Parrott?
Is there, could we? I don't know, we've done this before, talked about this before, sending out letters in in bills and stuff like that. But I'm not suggesting that, but perhaps creating a survey on our on our page where we can get maybe residents to share how many, and and we wouldn't capture the date of like who they are or their address, but maybe how many pets that they own, dogs, cats, and kind of get some some data as well, too. I don't I don't know if that if that helps.
It will. Are you asking for the owner to verify how many animals they have?
Pets are dogs and cats in their in their residence.
My only, I guess, feedback to that is, if you feel, even though I'm not asking for your name and address, that I would be truly anonymous, am I gonna tell you if I've got ten animals? We could put it out there. We could certainly do that. I just I'm not sure what the responsibility. I mean, we can do that tomorrow. That's a pretty straightforward thing.
Well, and the thing is, though, Kevin wasn't asking for people to give up their animals that they currently have, only that through nutrition, they would not collect any additional past four.
Yep.
So if they had ten, they could still put that in either.
Sure.
What about a situation that I described, where you had two people with, you know, X amount of animals, and then they moved in?
I now I think what you're talking about is an exception that has to be written into the ordinance. Life life events, a life event exception.
I I I I respect where you're coming from also, Kevin, and I I I agree that you, I could agree that you have to draw the line someplace. I could agree that you have to draw the line someplace, um, but I just think that four is too low. When I talked to the vet, she thought that, she agreed, and she thought that six was, uh, a manageable number. I mean, I, I know, I'm a thousand percent for sure that I could own six animals, get them all vaccinated, fed, well taken care of. And I'm on my own, you know, if I had a family to help, that makes it even easier. Um, I mean, and it's
Again, Sam, I only came to four because I researched and John researched, and four seems to be the overwhelming eighty percent number in the state of Illinois.
That doesn't mean that we can't be flexible. There's others in
Right now, we're unlimited, so we gotta come up somewhere.
Ms. McClellan?
Could we just, for the sake of argument, compromise at five? If we're gonna get information, I, I'm not sure about asking people how many animals that they have, but we could just put out there and say, well, this is what we're discussing, what are your thoughts? You know, that might be a, you know, information, just finding the information out, what everybody thinks about it.
Yeah, we can put something together. Okay, so Mr. Bateman, do you have the feedback that you need to move forward and work with Mr. Hoblit on some changes? Okay, anything further about multi pet? Okay, I believe Ms. McClellan, you had an announcement, something that you wanted to bring up under announcements?
I, I just wanted to clarify, um, the, um, parade, the information for the parade. So Santa is going to be at the depot at six thirty on the fourth, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and he is not going to be at, there will be no Santa after the parade then, December eleventh?
Correct.
Okay, and, um, the parade will start, what time does the parade start?
Six thirty.
Six thirty. All right, that's what I needed to just make sure.
On the eleventh.
Okay.
And, uh, Mr. McCoy and Ms. Matelko, there's an email exchange going back already to get all of our materials updated and get that published, and, um, Mr. McCoy published a press release already for this. So, we'll get things updated. Okay, uh, Mr. Landers, I believe you had an announcement?
Yep, just want to make, uh, everyone aware that we're gonna suspend the leaf pickup for this week on Wednesday. Uh, we'll push it out, you know, another week on the other end, as long as the weather conditions are fit, it's just dangerous for the employees walking across ice and everything else, and treacherous ground conditions that we have. Um, landscape waste facility will only be open Wednesday this week due to the severe cold temperatures on, uh, Thursday and Friday. Uh, so we'll be closed Thursday through Sunday, and back to the five days a week next week, which is Wednesday through Sunday, uh, eight to three fifty. And then, uh, there's a street closure, if you haven't been by, there's a street closure at, uh, three hundred block of North Kiccoo Street by Salvation Army, they're doing a sewer repair. They're at the Salvation Army, I'm not sure what the status of that is, they closed it down this morning, so we'll just have to wait and see, I'm gonna figure it's gonna be at least a day or two.
Okay. Um, any, any words of wisdom to share with us regarding snow? Not to, not to put the bullseye on you.
Um, you know, we do what we have to do, um, it's our responsibility to get the snow off the street. Um, every storm has its own unique, uh, conditions. The storm that we had on Saturday, the snow was extremely wet. So it balled like you were making a snowman, and that snow was gotta roll off the end of the plow, and it's gonna end up in front of people's driveways, regardless of before or after you clean it out, there's nothing we can do to change that. So we do the best we can to get, you know, get it off the roads. Another thing that took place on the Saturday storm is it got really cold. So those big balls of snow froze solid, so it's just the conditions. Now, the snow that we're having tonight, it's a different type of snow, it's a drier snow, it's more fluffy, so I don't, I don't see those issues with the big balls. Um, we probably put some leaves back in people's yards, too, when we plowed the streets, if there were big piles of leaves, I'm sure they're back in their yards now. So, um, I'm anticipating that we'll be plowing early in the morning, um, again. The two inches of snow is our line, once, once we have two inches of snow, then we will, we will be out plowing again. But we'll wait for the snow to, uh, let up and also, traffic's a big thing, so if we can plow during the middle of the night, there's less traffic. You know, especially downtown, you know, the parking, and there, there's more cars out of the way. So it makes it look much easier on the guys. And, uh, if anybody has any questions, please call me, I'd be happy to explain it, you know, the process and what we do and why we do it. Um, and, uh, I'd be more than happy to talk with them.
Yeah, and I, I will say, cause I had fielded a couple of calls today, and I know Walt, you know that, I've talked with you. But I just want to remind people that we, as elected officials, we also have to deal with the outcome of plowing. Um, I had to have somebody come and plow my driveway out, and so I could get our vehicles out of there. And, you know, as frustrating as it was, at the end of the day, someone came over quickly, they took care of it. I know Mr. Landers got a list of people that would be willing to come out and help you out, so when you call out there, um, he can give you that list if, if you have that concern. And also, don't be afraid to help your neighbors out, too. Heard a lot of, a lot of stories about that this week as well, so one of the calls I took today was just that. So, Mr. Bateman?
Well, two, two things, do you have any kind of timeline that American Water's gonna get the work done on the plane street?
I think they have the main, the remain, uh, the water mains is in, I believe, and they just have restoration to do. I haven't talked to them for a little bit, so I'm not sure. I know they've been absent for a week or two, so I'm not sure what the status is, but I can find out.
And if they opened it, I apologize, but do you have any idea why the opening in front of Taco Bell is closed, even though the driveway's in and everything?
They pulled, they pulled that traffic control today. They had to let the concrete cure. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you put that fresh concrete in there and you wanna let it set for at least a week before you, especially in these cooler temperatures, let it cure before you get traffic on it of any kind.
Yep. Okay. Lot of people are anxious. Um, I don't know that we have an official date, um, I've just been informing people they're scheduled to be in by the end of the year. Wes, is that fair? Okay, any other announcements? Okay, if there are no other announcements, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Alderman Downs made the motion, Alderman Clemmons second. Alderman favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This meeting is adjourned at six forty-two PM.